All right, let's open up meeting. City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Vega.
Here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Here.
Councilmember Ball.
Here.
Mayor Protam Dirk Starbuck.
Present.
Mayor Janelle Osborne, absent.
City Attorney, any reports on action during closed session, please?
Mayor Protam and Council, the City Council met in closed session to discuss the first item on the agenda, the existing litigation item. Council and staff had a discussion about that, no reportable action was taken. The second item on the closed session agenda, labor negotiation item, was not held tonight.
All right, thank you. Join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
City Manager report.
Thank you, I just want to remind everybody that we'll be having a budget workshop, May ninth, so a week from today, 6:30. Encourage everybody to come out and give their input, that's all I have for tonight.
I like it sweet, short. All right, public comment on consent, calendar please. No comment, we'll give it a minute here just to see if anybody calls in. The number is 875-8201. Appears that we're not going to have any public comment on consent, so we'll accept the motion.
Um, City Attorney, should I recuse myself from number four?
Yes, due to a financial interest that Councilmember Cordova has in Lompoke Land Holdings, which is the owner of Hilton Garden Inn, she has decided and will recuse herself from item number four. Because it's on the consent calendar, she does not need to leave the room.
So will we do two votes?
No, it can be voted on all at once, and Councilmember Cordova can just say that she's recusing herself from item four.
Okay, then I'll make the motion that we accept consent calendar. Am I moving too fast?
Nope, you're speaking clear.
Can we, can we hold, is, do we get a chance as council people to ask some questions?
Yes.
Okay, great. Sorry, I thought we were moving super fast.
Was I moving too fast?
No, it's okay, I just didn't want to miss an opportunity, I know a lot of people are here for a couple of reasons. Without pulling an item, can I, just for clarity, ask a couple of questions on a few items here? So, let's go to item on the consent calendar is number two. This is kind of big news, is there, can anyone update me on what this item is about?
I can do that, Councilmember Ball. So item number two is an agreement between the City of Lompoke and Mission Hills Community Services District. And this is a agreement regarding wastewater services for the Burton Ranch Development Project, that is, an entitled project in the north part of town, that the city actually filed a lawsuit due to a dispute with Mission Hills Community Services District over who, what district or what jurisdiction had the right to provide water service and wastewater service to the Burton Ranch Development. This, after a number of years of litigating and negotiating, this agreement tonight that's on the agenda is the result of a lot of negotiation between both sides and the developers of the project, that has come to resolve all of the issues about water and wastewater service for the Burton Ranch Project. The city and Mission Hills have reached an agreement where Mission Hills will provide, the Mission Hills Community Services District will provide water service to the Burton Ranch Development, and the City of Lompoke will receive the wastewater from the Burton Ranch Development and treat the wastewater at our wastewater treatment facility in Lompoke. And there are a number of terms in the wastewater agreement about, that's on the agenda, about the fees that will be paid to the city for the treatment of that wastewater. But the long and short of it is that this removes one of the last obstacles to the development and construction of the Burton Ranch Development, which is up to 476 homes on a large land parcel at the north end of town, at the Y. So approval of this tonight will resolve the lawsuit, provided that Mission Hills Community Services District also approves the wastewater agreement tomorrow. The district is having a special meeting tomorrow for their consideration and approval of this agreement.
Awesome, thank you for that, I appreciate that update. Personally speaking, I'm excited at this, that this is finally happening, and I'm excited at the potential of further steps made, a little bit of collaboration left to bring this all to fruition, but we haven't really built houses here in Lompoke in a long, long time, so this was a major hurdle, and again, I'm excited for all the parties, and I hope we as a city continue to be an active and positive partner in this relationship. I did have, just maybe for, just quick clarity, obviously, we're going to be taking all the wastewater, a few people might be curious about capacity, like, we have our own utility, we have our wastewater plant, is this taking us to the edge with capacity, can we handle this with ease? Maybe someone could answer that for me.
Wastewater could step up to the podium to answer if I am incorrect, but I believe that, based on what I've heard from our wastewater staff, that the project is going to send about 100,000 gallons, I'm not sure, per day, per day, to our wastewater treatment facility, and that is about 2% of our capacity, so that we have much more capacity than that left, so this is not going to be a large detrimental impact to our facility.
Awesome, thank you for that. Well, that's all I had for that item, can we go to a different item real quick?
Well, we've already closed the public comment part, but we have another oral communication coming up in a minute here.
Is it okay to move to item three on this consent calendar? So, we've received, as council, we've received several emails, letters today, that's all in public, all of you have access to that, and it's definitely talking about the issues with, you know, I don't call it illegal parking, but parking issues, overnight parking issues in the area, which is kind of known as the wine ghetto. Can we, can somebody update me on why this is happening, and what's, what are we trying to address, and will this solve everything, or is this a piece of the puzzle? Don't be shy.
This is to restrict camping and overnight stays there that are becoming a public issue for health and concerns of citizens, so yeah, and this is something that'll probably come back later to for address citywide.
So I appreciate that, this is, this definitely needs to happen, I just want to encourage the city and also the public that when we make these adjustments, it doesn't necessarily solve the problem, it sometimes moves the problem to another area. So I'd love for us to, again, don't just assume because this passes and we put up some signs that homeless issues just go away, that's not the way it works. So, I'd love for us to consider down the road, perhaps the wine community or the people in that area to, to either sit down with the city or the police chief and to talk about, you know, what, what are some of those things that could happen collaboratively with that group, to look out for themselves, and again, to clarify what the city's role is and what they can do, and how to process complaints and some of those issues, I know it's an issue over there, and we've heard quite a bit about it, so I look forward to continuing that conversation on how to figure that out. That's all I got.
How about a second while you're there?
You got a second?
All right, it's been moved and seconded that we accept consent calendar, let's vote. Passes 4-0, thank you.
That's 4-0 with Councilmember Cordova recusing on item four.
Yes. And staff presentation announcements? Okay, we'll move right into oral communications, anybody would like to have any oral communications? The number 875-8201, Mr. Sobani, if you'd like, there's, the floor is open.
My name is Morris Sobani, 204 Rameta Road, Santa Barbara. I heard the city attorney said about, you asked the question about the capacity, I happen to be a young man with to build a wastewater treatment plant. That was called Regional Wastewater Treatment, has a capacity of 60 million gallons a day. Vandenberg Air Force Base is about three gallon, that was connected to this thing because they found a magist. Lompoke has only 67 million capacity. So as far as the capacity goes, this wastewater treatment plant was anticipate for the whole area, Mission Hill, Vandenberg Village, by the way, Vandenberg Village is connected to this area. So as far as capacity, you have no problem. In addition, we feel minor, when I say minor modification, they could increase the capacity of the existing plant to 20 million gallon later on, if they want to. So, you should have no reservation to put this 400, 500 homes, in fact, it's good to have a small, in fact, at the time, I was really much in favor of collecting the Mission Hill to this wastewater treatment plant, then we did not, we would not have another small treatment plant that operate mediocrely, and, but that didn't happen, so they wanted to have their own, but I'm so glad that this new division is going there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Philip Gallander is Lompoke resident. And I'm concerned about what I've been hearing about the housing issue. The intention to cram a whole bunch of stack and pack little box houses on parking lots, apparently eminent domaining property away from people, 28 individual houses to be turned into 249 residences, little wee boxes. Has anybody asked the Elks if they're willing to give up their parking lots so you can put another 48 odd houses there? Or the school? The Honda? If a whole bunch of residents are now living on the school district itself, how safe are the children? There seems to be an issue whereby reason in development in Lompoke is restricted. Organization rather like Lafco, the North County-South County split. The apparent desire to suppress the North County from the South County. There, the Bailey Corridor hasn't been developed, why? We are getting the Burton Ranch thing going, finally, after how many years of discussion? But we could have had a lot more houses here had the multiple levels of regulation and regulators. The difficulties in getting permits in a timely manner. The issues of being able to just simply get a job done without having to go through it three or four times, because there are three or four levels of bureaucracy you've got to satisfy. There are fundamental issues that we as a city have to look at. All of them imply developing a backbone in the city. And basically telling the county no, or telling the state no, we can't do it that way because it's inefficient, it doesn't work, and it produces very poor results. Thank you.
My name is Webster Lompoke, just want to invite people to come to the National Day of Prayer, Christian National Day of Prayer, this Thursday, May 4th, here at the Civic Plaza at noon. Pray for national, state, county, local officials, offices, and our first responders and so forth, and you're certainly welcome to come. Thank you.
Okay, seeing nobody calling in and nobody else for public comment, we'll move on to our next item here, introduction of ordinance number 1703, parentheses 23, amending Lompoke Municipal Code to create an additional option for the timing of payment for affordable housing in lieu fees by developers.
Good evening, Mayor Protam and members of the council. Coming back to you again after an amendment we did last year on the same topic, in lieu fees. So I'm just going to quickly give a little background, then I'll get into the proposed amendment this evening. So back in October of 2022, there was an amendment to change the method and how we calculate and the amount of the in lieu fee here in the City of Lompoke, which was based on the Home Buyer Assistance Program, the maximum amount that we assist in that program. Based on previous amendments and market conditions, the community development, and of course, this is in conjunction with the Planning Commission, are recommending an additional option or another tool, the tool belt, for paying in lieu affordable housing fees. Currently, developers can pay in lieu fees in a lump sum prior to issuance of any building permits or a pro rata basis. Under the proposed amendment, there's another options for the timing, and I'll get into that. So the new amendment would allow a developer or applicant to lock in their in lieu fee. Now, locking it in would allow them to not incur additional increases in the fee, and then after that, what it does, it's, the proposed amendment would also allow it to be tiered or done over a three-year period. There's just an example here, as well as in your staff report, where they make their first payment, and then additional payments would be made, every 10 building permits outside the old town development area, Area 2, and then every six building permits in the redevelopment area, too. The reason why it's slightly different is because the amount of affordable housing that's required in that amendment area, too, which I have in your report, it's basically this, this map, that's the area in red, is 15%, as opposed to the rest of the city is 10%. So, this is also in your staff report, but this just kind of gives a, a quick little summary of, you know, of our three-year period, they'd make the first payment, they'd lock in whatever that rate is, on the first anniversary, they'd have to pay at least half, on the second anniversary, they'd have to pay 75%, and then by the third anniversary, from that first payment, 100% of the in lieu fees would need to be paid. Now, if the payments aren't maintained, then they would go back to the regular code requirement, and their fee would no longer be locked in, so they would almost undoubtedly incur an increase in the amount of in lieu fee. And even if the project, the residential project isn't built, they would still have to pay the in lieu fees. So, basically, as I mentioned, it would allow them to lock in that fee, it also ensures that the city will receive the full payment of in lieu fees within three years, and then this amendment, kind of like the one back in October, it's really allowing other, additional options for the developer or the applicant, and it could also accelerate housing, which was mentioned by Councilmember Ball, we, we are struggling to build a lot of housing in Lompoke. This amendment tonight is consistent with our zoning code and our general plan, and the environmental review for this particular amendment to the zoning code was exempt pursuant to Section 15061B3. And tonight, we're just looking to introduce ordinance 170323 for the first reading, with the further reading waived, to amend that section of the inclusionary housing ordinance of our zoning code, which is Section 1732440, to add that additional option for the timing on payment of affordable housing in lieu fees, or provide other direction this evening. That does conclude the staff report, and I'm available, the rest of the staff available for any questions.
Councilmember Vega. That was a quick question. Councilmember Ball.
Yeah, nothing too serious, I don't think, I was just curious, so basically, it's kind of financing these payments, I, yes, how did you guys decide whether it's three years versus five, or?
Good question, we worked very closely with the city attorney's office, I wish I could say I could take credit for that three-year period, but I think it was basically, it was an option to allow flexibility because you could space out the payments, as opposed to needing to pay them all at once, and just adding on to that additional option in our code right now.
No, I, I think options are always great, I love the idea of actually incentivizing someone to take advantage of our updates to the code and actually build on something, I was just curious how, how we got to the, this is the sweet spot for incentivizing folks.
I could add, Councilmember Ball, it really was tied to the project performance, and typically, how a housing development is staged for financing, and how they kind of lock in their rates, what we were learning was some developments were having a hard time locking in uncertainty of rate fluctuations with regards to that fee, so we wanted to make something that worked with their financing terms, so this was something that would work across the board.
That term up there, locked in, that's really a critical component of this update, we should definitely get the word out, out about that, so, do we think this is enough? I mean, I know we're going through the motion, update the ordinance, and, but two years, five years, do we see the industry moving on some of this because of this type of an update?
I know for certain one project that will be able to take advantage of this and really get cranking on their financing, and they already have their building permit applications in, so they're under plan check right now, have been for a couple of weeks now for three different models.
Right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Another quick question here, though, all fees have to be paid before a certificate of occupancies issued, is that still correct?
I think it's actually building permit issuance is, is the timetable.
All other fees, the in lieu fee will be tied to the, the schedule that's stated there, but they have to pay it all prior to the final certificate of occupancy, so we're not going to let them keep making payments after they've sold the house, basically.
Got you. We'll open the floor for public comment, anybody, you know, in the public, the number is 875-8201. Give them a couple of seconds here to call in. I don't think anybody's calling in. All right, I'll bring her back to council. Councilmember Ball.
I'll make a motion to accept the introduction of ordinance number 1703, parentheses 23.
All right. Councilmember Cordova.
Second.
Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes 4-0, Mayor absent. Madam Clerk, do we have any written communications?
Nothing more than you've already received.
Okay, well, we'll do our last oral communication here, anybody have any oral communications? If anybody in the public would like, you know, give us a call, 875-8201.
Mr. Mayor, councilmembers, my name is Stephen Sobani, and I wanted to just acknowledge the passing of ordinance three related to the putting up signs, and Councilmember Ball, you mentioned something that I think is so very true, that this is not necessarily a solution, but it's a first step towards a solution. And, you may even know my father, Morris Sobani, I actually learned to ride my bicycle on that strip of industrial way, so it's kind of a full circle moment to come back. One of the things I wanted to say, seeing that the police chief is here as well, is we'd love to avail ourselves to host conversations about how, as tenants, as landowners, we can be a better part of the community and help solving any, a solution or finding solutions as the problem of homelessness and vagrancy continues to evolve, something that we've talked about just briefly, I know, before the council member, I just wanted to avail ourselves and our resources to, for any conversations that might be relevant and salient to certainly a citywide challenge that we all have to face together. So, thank you again.
Seeing nobody else and nobody call in, we'll go ahead and move to council comments and meeting reports. Councilmember Vega.
I'd like to thank everyone that's here tonight, and I'd like to see the positive note as far as some developer who's willing to build here, so I'm hoping that that agreement comes together with Community, Mission Hills Community Service District. As we see building and investments in Lompoke, it gives us hope, and it gives us also a little more strength to try and do better for our community, and, and do the cleanup and, and the infrastructure buildouts that we need. I know the families out here are looking for something to do, something to do out here, other than drinking and smoking, they want things that they can actually do out here, and they want to be able to be proud of where they, where they live, so I think that's every one of our goals here, and I think probably with council, we, as we move forward, taking a stronger directive on how we want our money spent, is probably going to be a lot, is going to be very conducive to our improvement here, to let status quo keep happening the way it is, we're probably not going to get much change here in our lifetime, so I think we need to be a little bit more, have some more strength here on how we direct our money to be spent, because throwing money at the wall sometimes doesn't result in an investment return, so, thank you so much, okay, I appreciate everybody here.
Councilmember Cordova.
Just as a reminder, I know it was mentioned earlier, but it's at 12 noon, I don't think we mentioned the time, or the time was mentioned, for a National Day of Prayer, which will take place on Thursday, May 4th, here at City Hall in the courtyard.
Thank you. Councilmember Ball.
I'm just going to take a quick second, and please, I apologize if you're in a rush to get out of here, but there, and the only reason I'm bringing this up, not the only reason, let me correct that statement. I was washing dishes the other day at my house on Walnut, I looked out the kitchen window and I heard the sirens coming, got louder and louder, and a police officer pulled into the alley right across from me, and another police officer right behind him, and kept hearing the sirens coming, I didn't hear anything, didn't know what, what it was, and it turned out that somebody was shot, I think in the head, in the alley, basically about 150 yards from my kitchen window. Definitely got my attention, and it seems there was another shooting within, within an hour or two, and it is, I've seen some people comment, well, where are the police? Where are the police? Well, I'll tell you something, they were there in record time, but we need to have a serious conversation about safety and public safety and the need, and the quantity of calls that our police department, our firefighters who also show up to react to these types of situations, we need to have, do we have enough as a department, as a city, are we meeting the need? We need to have an updated conversation, and I hope that all of you that are aware of some of these challenges that our city faces, instead of putting the blame on what the city can or cannot do, get to understand what we have. Come to us, come to this meeting on May 9th, where we have a budget discussion, where we make critical decisions on investing money to try to address some of these problems. Get to know these things, I think that's super important. So I don't know if it's appropriate or not, I, I have a lot of faith in our new police chief, I know he's, they are responding to a tremendous amount of calls, and I thought if he'd be willing to, I know he's still on crutches, but is there a chance he'd be willing to reassure this community that we're doing the very best we can to address some of these situations, and that we need to have a serious conversation about what we need to do in the future? Would you be willing? Thank you, I appreciate it.
This is a gem of a community, I feel that in my heart, and you have a great police department, and we're doing everything we can. I had a conversation with the mayor recently and said, you hired me to make this community safer, and to do that, we need, we need more police officers, but the realistic- But the realistic side is, is the city's not in a place to afford those police officers right now, so we have to be smart about how we spend our money. And coming to the, the, the meeting on the 9th is one way that the community can absolutely get involved and share with your representation how to address the needs that you feel are important. You have some of the best officers in the county, in my opinion, and they work hard every day. And as you've heard from my predecessor, Joe Mariani, there's been times when many of these officers were getting ready to go home after a 12-hour shift because that's what they work. And something major goes down, and they turn around and they go right back without being told and get into uniform and go out there to make this community safe. We are doing everything we can, our call volumes are up, but we're no different than any other community in America. This is something that's seen throughout the country, folks. It's not unique to us. It's seen throughout the country and throughout the state. I can, I can assure you and I can assure the council here tonight, your officers will continue to keep this community safe as best we can, but it's very, very important that you come to these meetings and you get involved and you hear the facts, all right? Not, not what social media's putting out there, not, you know, as Councilmember, Councilmember Ball said, these officers are getting to the calls as fast as they can, but sometimes they get stacked, right? Major things go on. We did have a homicide investigation over the weekend. At the same time, there was a fire, and our dispatch staff are managing both of these major events going on at one time. It's those critical times where the additional bodies are absolutely most valuable, but we will get there, and I know that the city manager is working hard in that direction. And these additional homes, if this project is approved up on Burton Mesa, is going to help the council fund a lot of these needs that the community needs. But we are out there, we're out there 24/7, and we will put whatever hours we have to put in to continue to keep you safe, just like we're going to keep the special investigation unit together throughout the summer to address any of these violent crime tics that we tend to have over the summer. So, we're out there doing it, they're going to continue to work hard, and I have no doubt in my mind they will be successful.
I appreciate that. Thank you. I think it's important for the community to, to be engaged. I know a lot of people see this from a distance or see it up close and don't necessarily know how to participate or react or get involved. This is the place where we can make those decisions to at least try to make a start towards something, so please stay engaged. The last thing I just wanted to mention, just something for fun, this Friday evening, downtown Lompoc, it's kind of the precursor to Old Town, but it's Cinco de Mayo weekend, it's First Fridays, so this First Friday, they'll have a lot of food trucks, a lot of stuff in Old Town, some fun booths. So, if you've got time and the weather's decent, I hope you guys can get outside and enjoy downtown Lompoc. That's all I got.
All right. I presented a proclamation last Saturday for Arbor Day for the city of Lompoc. Mayor Osborne was also there. She presented a proclamation to Judy McKinnon at Recognition Grove out at Riverbend Park, and pretty well attended for something that wasn't put out. I was very happy about that. I have a council request. There is, um, there's been an issue and a question of the council concerning contract complacency. What Councilmember Cordova went through was not a contract compliant issue, but it caused me to look at some issues. And years ago, following our LH CDC and some other issues within the city, we started contract complacency. The council is the ultimate responsible for the contracts, the monitoring. If it fails, who gets blamed? If it's successful, staff gets credit, you know? So, what happened is, it used to be called contract complacency. We received a report January and July on any contracts that were part of the council. Well, recent events have brought to my attention, when I look at it, that we do it now in July through community development only, and it's now known as the annual sub-recipient financial pragmatic and monitoring report. I think it would be important for the council if we brought this back and looked at it because there are probably contracts happening that we're not aware of. It's just a good thing to do, a double check. We don't want to get involved in something, and that's why we started it, but we are, it slowly evolved into nothing but monitoring housing. Okay, that died on arrival.
Councilmember Starbuck, so the, well, the council can't take action tonight to start having the contract compliance reports.
Wouldn't it be just to ask for a report?
Yeah, that's what I was going to say. You could do a council request for an agenda item for a report on what happened to the contract compliance reports that you used to get in January and July that you're saying.
That's all I could ask. Councilmember Ball.
So, I, I, as long as that's forward-facing, I think if it's in regard to anything that's on this agenda, hopefully it's not, but if it's forward-facing and adds some transparency, and it is a discussion of that thing and whether or not we should have it in the future, then I'd, I'd support that.
Yeah, it's, like I say, it, there's nothing directed at a council member with this, but just the fact that it was brought to my attention that we are not monitoring the contracts, we're monitoring our housing contracts, so.
So, do you need a third, or what?
It would be helpful, thank you.
Thank you, okay. I'll give you a third.
Thank you. Okay, well, nothing else then. I will go ahead and adjourn the Lompoc City Council meeting to a regular meeting, 6:30 on May 16th. We do have a special meeting next Tuesday, May 9th, same time on budget. Thank you for attending.